Jerry Hayman? Most gracious heavenly Father, we bow our hearts before you this evening and we come to you with thanksgiving. Thank you for this day, thank you for life, thank you for each one that's here today. Thank you for the rain you give us to water our land and nourish our crops, God. Now Lord, we pray, Lord Jesus, that you would just look down upon this meeting tonight. God bless our mayor and our city council, the leaders of this city. God be in whatever's done tonight, that your will be done. We give ourselves to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone out this afternoon and we'll just get right started right into it. And the first person that's up to speak is Chip Wood on the Shavie Bridge.
Good afternoon, to give you an update on where we are on Shavie Bridge. In March, we submitted construction plans to ALDOT for review and that got you locked in on your funds. I met the deadline, it's supposed to be in October, we made it in March, so we're good on securing the funds. We got comments back from the construction bureau. We've answered all those comments, we're ready to resubmit those back to ALDOT. Bridge Bureau has reviewed the plans as well on the bridge structure. They have given us comments. We're working through those comments, should have those ready to go back to ALDOT in two, three weeks. Once we get that, and really we're waiting on right away acquisition and Nicky's working on, once we get all the right of way acquired, all this information resubmitted to ALDOT, they'll review it, do the final review process, and we should be ready to, ALDOT actually set our bid schedule at that point. We don't say that late, they actually said to bid later. That's where we are. Any questions?
I was wish stay on track.
Stay on track. Stay on track. So, Nicky, you're working on the right of way?
I have done the title work on the parcels. And Bradley Wisner, his firm was hired to do the right of way acquisition. And I know that he sent the initial letters, or the city did send the initial letters out to the landowners. So, all that's proceeding along.
And so, we were just talking a little bit ago, we had talked about the utilities had to be moved, so as soon as this right of way is acquired, then we can proceed with the utilities too, to get that done. Yeah, but once you acquire the right of way, then you've got a right of way for the bridge and utilities. Okay. All right. Sound good? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's go. Go play.
Good afternoon. On the Boozer Road project, we've met with the county engineer a couple times with Ben Luther. And because in that agreement, it was the bridge construction was through the ALDOT project, and then the road construction was going to be with the county. And so, we've got some documentation on that, but we have a waiver from ALDOT that they requested actually go through and get signed by the county engineer. And so, we've met with Ben Luther a couple times, and so they looked at the project, and they are set to get us that return letter signed, which has already been through y'all's end. And so, they'll get it signed and returned to us as soon as they have their next submission meeting, is what we've been told. And so, that'll just, that'll solidify all the agreements that's been in place for the county to actually do the road work after the bridge is constructed, which is a good thing for us, to want to make sure that's in place. And so, then, some other things have taken place, the environmental manager with Innovative Programs Group with ALDOT, they've received a few things from us, we've sent them the design risk assessment, location risk assessments, some other forms they required. And the only thing that remains on that end is a nationwide permit through the Corps of Engineers. And so, they've received, there's another document that the city has signed and we've sent over to them. So, they're in the process of reviewing it, and they'll issue a nationwide permit, just because it involves with a water body. And so, once we get that back, the environmental manager with Innovative Programs can complete the environmental document. And once that endowment is completed, then the city will be able to acquire the right of way. They'll get permission from ALDOT once we have that environmental document in hand. So, it's, that's really the only thing we're waiting on, is the Corps of Engineers to give us the permit, basically. And then, we'll get the environmental doc, and the city will be allowed to acquire the right of way that we've already done the work on. So, that's in good shape. We also have a structural engineer working on some retaining walls involved with the project. And so, those are things that'll have to go into the plan submission. And then, we also are redoing some slopes that ALDOT requested from our initial submission to them. And then, we're proceeding on with our plans and specs really ahead of ALDOT's requested schedule, just to be ready for when they are ready to review it. They don't, as we had discussed before, they don't want to review the Boozer Road project until they actually bid out Shavie's, because they view Rainsville's funding as a whole instead of just separate projects. So, with Shavie being a higher priority from ALDOT's standpoint, they're really, well, they told us that it would wait until the Shavie's bridge actually bid. And so, we're still on track with the project, still proceeding forward with it. And so, that's kind of where we're at with ours, and then hopefully, Shavie's comes in in budget, and then we'll have still remaining funds for it.
Okay. Questions?
Good.
All right. Thank you. Jerry Clifton.
Well, it's that time again. Our ninth year, and everything is going extremely well. We're right at 700 runners. And it's exciting to know that our city attorney is also a runner. So, I always try to get Nicky to come up and run.
Is she in her direction?
She hasn't entered yet, but we have, we have four of us.
She has.
But, but, you know, again, I just want to say how much I appreciate the help from the city, all different services. I'll be sometime this week getting with the chief, and we'll be riding around and, you know, going over everything with him, and different ones, and, you know, Sammy here, I mean, we have so much help. That weekend, Friday, next Friday and Saturday, we'll have, you know, 100-plus volunteers that'll be working. We have runners right now coming from California, Indiana, Mississippi, Kentucky, Georgia, Tennessee, South Carolina, obviously Alabama. And we have one confirmed Olympic qualifier runner coming, we may have two, I feel like we probably will have. Last year, we had three or four elite runners come in. For people that don't understand what an elite runner is, an elite runner is someone that's actually paid to run. And so, we have probably this year, probably have half-dozen or more of those coming. So, our race is now becoming, every year it becomes more and more of a regional run. We probably, as far as prize money and size, we'd be second to the Huntsville Cotton Road Run. And so, again, I just appreciate, you know, everything that y'all have done and continue to support us in this. And we've got some great charities that we're working with this year. So, if y'all don't mind, I'd like to get that puddle off. Marley, you want to?
You've done got mine and my chair.
Oh, that's right, I've already, I've already got your mug on your chair. Everybody look like a runner.
We need a bigger piece of paper, guys.
I don't think so.
All right, one, two, three.
All right, thank y'all, appreciate it. Thanks again. I'll leave these right here with Kelly, so if anybody does want any.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, Mr. Richard Pope.
Would it be all right if I let her go first and then I come behind you?
Yeah, it'd be fine.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, man.
Mm-hmm. Come on up. Mr. King.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today and tell you my story. On July 22nd of last year, my life was changed forever because of a dog that was allowed to run loose in the city limits of Rainsville. I was riding my bicycle, and a dog ran out in front of my bicycle, causing me to wreck. I was laying in the, in the road, couldn't move due to seven broken bones. My pelvis was broken in four places, my tailbone was broken, my left arm was broken in two places. I had to be transported by ambulance to the hospital, I had to have surgery. I now have three metal pins in my left arm, I have a metal rod that goes all the way across my back. I was in rehab for eight weeks, I was in a wheelchair for seven weeks, because I couldn't put any weight on my legs, while five broken bones in my lower extremities healed. And I'll never be able to lead a normal life again and do the things that I love, which is exercise, and ride my bicycle out on the road. I'll never be able to do that again, all because of a dog being allowed to run loose in the city limits of Rainsville. My left foot, all my toes on my left foot are still completely numb. I've just been out of a leg brace, and I'm using a cane continually for one month. I now use the cane if I have to walk over a short distance, all because of a dog. But I wasn't the first person that was injured in the city limits of Rainsville due to a dog. Ms. Carol was attacked by dogs while she was jogging. After that, you pass the dog ordinance, but it was repealed, then another ordinance was passed, but yet nothing was done to enforce that ordinance, and then I was injured. And now recently, another person has been injured severely due to a dog attack. Brother Hayman was attacked and injured severely inside the city limits of Rainsville, and still nothing is being done. And my question is, is someone going to have to die before the city of Rainsville enforces the dog ordinance? And what about restitution being made to those of us who have suffered severe injuries due to a dog up to this point? My medical expenses are almost a quarter of a million dollars. Of that amount, I owe almost $25,000, and this amount is increasing every week. I go to physical therapy twice a week, which is $60 out of my pocket. Every time I go to the doctor, it's $50 out of my pocket. Medicine copays out of my pocket. I will have continuing medical expenses for the rest of my life. The surgeon wants to remove these pins in my left arm, re-break my arm, move my arm to a different position, put new metal plates and pins in my arm. The hand surgeon is looking at doing surgery on my hand. It is a continuing, ongoing nightmare of medical expenses and pain, and will be from now on, all because of a dog. And I'm sure my brother, Brother Hayman, has incurred and will incur thousands of dollars in medical bills due to a dog attack. And my question to you today, members of the city council and Mr. Mayor, why wasn't the existing dog ordinance enforced before I suffered injuries, before Brother Hayman suffered injuries? And then, after we were injured, why isn't it being enforced right now? And what will be done for those of us who have suffered injuries to be provided restitution for the thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars in medical bills that we will be facing throughout the rest of our lifetime? And I'm asking, why? Is the existing dog ordinance enforced, or a new leash law passed that will not allow any dog in the city limits of Rainsville to run loose? If a dog is outside, it should be kept in a fence or kept on a leash at all times. And I ask you to act now, before it's too late, before someone dies because of this dog problem within our city. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today.
Appreciate this opportunity to be able to come before you and speak. I have not been attacked by a dog physically. Me and my wife, which is here, we've been the members of this community since 2004. At that time, after we moved in, we had dogs charges, we've had stuff took out of a garage, I've called the police department. Police Department's always been super nice, very professional. First time they come out, none of these gentlemen here, this was, you know, several years ago, and I'm setting a precedent, it's the reason I'm starting, when we first moved in. I was told if I kept my garage door shut, the dogs wouldn't get in. And I asked the policeman, I said, "Am I supposed to stay, you know, caved up in my house?" And he said, "I'm just telling you, that's the best way to keep dogs out of your garage." And I said, "Well, I've got dog mess in my yard, I've got it in my flower gardens." His reply was, "They've got the poop somewhere." Which is true, I understand that, but it shouldn't be in my yard since they're not my dogs. This rocked on for a while, and Stanley, if y'all know the county, he knows me very well. I've never met him, I've got a lot of respect for him. I called him in 2011. I said, "Dogs are tearing up my garden, and police say there's nothing they can do." He comes out, he examines my garden, and he said, "Mr. Pope, they have literally tore your garden up." And he said, "Do you mind if I put a trap?" I said, "No, sir, I don't mind, I said, "It'll be fine with me." He puts a trap out. At the time, I was home every night. I'd get up, I'd leave about 4:30 in the morning. First three days, there's a dog in that trap, same dog. I called Stanley at 7:00 a.m., and I said, "Stanley, we've got a dog. I said, "The dog has been messing up my yard, he's in that trap." First three days, the dog is gone when Stanley gets there. Stanley told me, he said, "There's nothing I can do, for I don't have poop, but he's in there." The fourth day, I take a picture, the dog is in there. Stanley gets my picture, comes down to City Hall, and I believe it was Richard, the revenue officer, as well as the police, went out to encounter my neighbor. My neighbor got very vocal about what he could do with his dog and stuff. Nothing was charged. My other neighbor that I have now, they had six dogs waking us up at 2:30 and 3:30. I come down to the police station, and I've actually got the police report, but I come down to the police station, it says here, "August 31st, 2011." I actually get this filled out. Everything is going good until they ask me who the person was that lived at this residence. I told them who it was, the whole thing stopped right then. I was told that they could not process this until they knew exactly who this person was. I said, "I'm not understanding," because I don't, this is my first time ever filled one out. I said, "I'm not understanding, what are you talking about? We got to be sure that we get the right Mr.," and I'm not going to announce his name, but I said, "Look, I will ride with the police, I will point the man out, it's just him and his wife, there's no other man that lived there." They told me to call back in three or four days, they would let me know. I called back, they told me, "We can't prosecute him because we don't have a dog ordinance." That was in 2011. And I asked, "What am I supposed to do to get a decent night's rest?" Never been smart, nobody's never been smart with me, but I was told, "You might want to get you some earplugs, Mr. Pope." And I'm thinking, "I'm gonna have to buy earplugs for me to get a good night's rest." 2012, another police report, but this one's got a little bit better to it, it's got videos attached to it. My wife goes down, they go to this same residence, and they now have a no trespassing sign. Chief Centers and Stanley goes to this residence, and notice they've got six dogs. Well, now we got a bonus there with them, they got three monkeys. They're outside, they're inside, monkeys never bothered me, but I'm like, you know, what, if we're gonna have a circus now? So, anyway, they go. I still never got called to court for this one, I knew I was gonna be called for this one, but I never got called to court to testify against these people here. I'm still waiting on that. That was in 2012. Stanley has been out to our property several times. And just to fast forward, two weeks ago, my mother lives in Jackson Square Apartments, it's kind of like a senior citizen. Her neighbor's on a walker, my mom is 80 years old. She's walking with this woman, the dog starts barking. Never charges him, but it starts barking. My mom turns around and her neighbor, they go back into their apartment. Later on, when the sun goes down, this dog shows up at my mother's front door. She was never afraid the dog was coming in, but it startled her, the dog knows where she lives at. She called me and I said, "Momma called police, just called police, they passed the ordinance, and they'll be able to do something." Once again, the policeman was super courteous and nice, they told my mother there was nothing they could do. They did call and get the animal control authority, which was Stanley, and like I said, Stanley can back all this stuff up, and I'm telling you, Stanley took him three days before he could get out there, one guy for the whole county. He comes out three days later, I talked to him this past Friday, I said, "Stanley, I said, "Let me ask you something here. Should they have called you, or should they have took care of it?" He said, "Richard, I'm just gonna be honest with you, by the time I get there, the dog is long gone." He said, "The police department should have took care of the dog, or else found out where the dog was at. The dog is just in the back neighborhood. Stanley's been by there several times. He's coming over to my house this week to put another dog trap out. We're getting our garden messed up again." So, you know, with all of that said, and I've got like four pages, and I'm not gonna keep y'all here all day long, but, you know, this is stuff that's been going on, been going on, been going on. And people want to say it's a pit bull. I don't own a dog, by the way, but I love dogs. Ms. Carol was attacked by bull mastiffs. Saber again, it was a small dog that got her. Brother Hayman, it was a pit bulldog that got him. Over at my mom, it's a lab and a poo. I congratulate y'all on passing the vicious dog act, that it's not just a certain type of dog, because, you know, that would be saying only one dog is vicious. We don't have a dog problem in Rainsville. We don't have a dog owner problem in Rainsville. The problem lies with the city council, the mayor, and the police. We have got, I've got right here, 30 pages of ordinances. The first one was in 2012, after I appeared before the city council, Ms. Carol was attacked. It was soon to be repealed, it was outrageous what was in that one. Then we had another one in 2013, it was a good one, but it wasn't enforced. 2014, this replaced the one in 2013. The vicious dog act, unless I'm mistaken, doesn't repeal this one, it just adds to it. It's got a lot of good stuff to it, but gentlemen, it's just like this. If a person runs a red light up here, and there's no ticket given to them, eventually, death is gonna ensue. One last item, if I may. My next door neighbor, two weeks ago, I got up at 6:00 a.m., I looked out, I fixed my coat, and I'm looking just straight out, and I see that he's walking, not the one that I had trouble with, he's elderly, gentlemen, he's walking his dog on a leash. He's had trouble with another different dog from the neighbor that used to let the dogs out of the trap. I'm sitting there and I see him walk around the side of his house, the dog's still on leash, I see him pull the pistol out, and I'm like, "What in the world's going on here?" All of a sudden, he goes bam! I see the other dog, he's already charging. He's trying to stop the neighbor's dog from attacking him and his dog. Four shots, he fired into the ground before that dog stopped. I wasn't there when the conversation happened, I left and went to load it, but my wife was on the back porch, 150 feet, she heard him screaming at each other. I come back, my neighbor comes in, because I'm over my garden working, he says, "You're not gonna believe what happened, Mr. Pope." I said, "Yeah, I do too, I saw everything this morning, if that's what you're talking about." He asked me, he said, "Will you go to court?" I said, "You bet I will." I said, "I witnessed every part of it." I said, "Now, your argument, I don't know nothing about." He said, "He told the man, your dog came on my property. It wasn't the first time either." He said, "If he comes again, I'm gonna have to kill him." That neighbor told the neighbor that had the dog on his property with the leash, "If you kill my dog, I'm gonna kill your dog." That's where we're at now. Somebody's gonna die, and it may not be at the hands of a dog, but I repeat what I said, and people say, "I can't believe you're saying that, Richard." We don't have a dog problem. Dogs are gonna act like dogs. We don't have a dog problem. We don't have a dog owner problem, just like a red light. If we don't enforce it, they're gonna do what they want to do. And it's that simple. If y'all don't stand up and protect the citizens, you don't see them riding bikes no more in the city limits. You don't see people walking. You see them out there on the main street, because people can stop and help them. But you don't see people walking, you used to see elderly people walking the streets and stuff. You do not see that anymore, gentlemen. You don't see people riding bikes, they're terrified in this city. And, you know, I hate to say it like this, but if there's a corporation getting ready to come to the city of Rainsville, the dogs is not the problem. Y'all, by non-enforcement, may keep employment coming here, because I don't know about y'all, but I wouldn't want to take a chance on bringing a company in here that I'm gonna have to pay insurance on somebody being mauled by a dog. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Talk a little bit about the dog, what we had talked about a few weeks ago when Brother Hayman came, and we added to the ordinance about having a animal control person. We're actually hiring an animal control person tonight. It won't just all be solely on the county, like Stanley coming out here. I know Stanley real well, I've knew him for years and years, he's a great guy. But he can't cover everything in the, in the whole county and cover us too. So, so we're actually hiring a guy tonight to actually start patrolling our streets, picking up dogs, and moving forward with this. Now, it's one of those things that, you know, it took a few days to find somebody, it took a few days to equip everything we needed, we have to have traps, we have to have cages, we have to have catch poles. So, all of that has took a little bit of time, but this week, he's gonna start training with Stanley and start moving forward on catching some of these dogs. So, that's where we're at. Yes?
I asked Stanley about that, and he told me, this was Friday, and it may have been today that y'all made, but I asked Stanley, I said, "Has anybody offered to come train with you?" He said, "I've always let somebody come train with me for a week, and I've not heard from nobody."
We couldn't let anybody go train officially till we hire. So, that will happen after we hire, tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So, we're trying to move forward with this to make it better in the city, because I want to see it better too. When I was out campaigning, I liked to get a bid twice. And so, I know exactly what you're talking about.
And not, not to keep interrupting, Mr. Mayor, but if there's a dog loose, what's a correct action? Because some people, they don't know the animal control or the Rainsville Police, which one?
Yeah, it'll be the, it'll be through the Rainsville Police.
So, after tonight, start calling the police?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And what it is, you'll need to, you know, fill out a report, you know, call and do some kind of report on it, because we need, we need a paper trail on this stuff. You know, it just don't need to be, you know, call and then go out there and check on it, but we need an actual paper trail on this, you know, on these dogs.
So, like on the two incident reports that I've got, that I never heard back from, I will hear something back?
We should have, with this animal control person, we should start moving forward a lot quicker in getting out there.
All right, sir.
Now, to start with, to start with, he's, he's just gonna be 19 hours, so we'll be spacing him out at different times. What I was gonna do is start with him next weekend, because a lot of people seize these on the weekends, because people's at home, they're not at work. So, probably for the next couple of weeks, he's gonna work mostly weekends.
Yes.
And try to, and be visible in town. He's gonna be going out, riding the roads. He's gonna be going out, riding the roads, answering calls, that kind of stuff.
And we've talked with the county, so when we pick them up, I mean, we have a place to put them.
Right.
He's gonna have a personal key, he's gonna go with Leslie, meet everything down there where she wants the stuff done, and he'll be able to carry, I mean, so Saturdays and Sundays, when you can't get Stanley, this and that, we'll have somebody to get him.
I know it seems like that we hadn't done anything from the last meeting when Brother Hayman was here, but we have been moving forward, trying to get everything in order to get to this point.
That's the reason I was asking, because when my mom, you know, she called initially, this was after the meeting, and after the ordinance went into effect, you know, she was called, so the dogs come back, and I said, "Well, Momma," I said, "Call the police department." She said, "It didn't go good the first time, so I'm not calling again."
Well, hopefully going forward it will, that's our plan, is to make this a lot better.
Mayor, can I address some of these points?
Yes.
Just so you know, we have enforced that. Since this new ordinance has been passed, we have rewritten citations summoning people into court on the vicious animal.
Yes, sir.
I've worked closely with the mayor, as well as other members of the council, that we've got all these, like he was saying, it takes us time. I went personally to three and a half hours into Tennessee to get a dog box for us this past Saturday.
Right.
The catch poles actually came in today from UBS. We are set up, as far as I know, mostly to start, I think, is it this weekend, Mayor?
We're gonna, I'd like to get him with Stanley this week, a few hours, and let him train with Stanley, if that's possible with Stanley, and then this weekend.
And I have personally, myself, been out patrolling in neighborhoods as well, and I have talked to multiple people about their dogs, about giving them, "Hey, this is fixing to happen. If you don't want your dog picked up, you need to keep your dog on a leash or in a chain link area, or a fence area, however they wanna do it." But that has to be under control.
Yes, sir.
So, we are enforcing that. We, like I said, we already have criminal cases, people charged with the vicious dog ordinance that have hearings, that I don't know the exact dates off the top of my head, but they are set to be in the Rainsville Municipal Court.
Yes, sir.
So, we're working on it.
Thank you.
It's just gonna take time, and y'all's patience, and plus, the officers are not set up right now. The patrol officers are not set up to handle that situation. No patrol officer is. Well, we have transported one in the backseat patrol car already, just to make sure that it's taken care of.
Right, right.
So, just so y'all know, we are on top of it, it's just, we gotta get out everything and all our ducks in a row, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There you go.
But I was gonna say this, me and Ricky was talking just last night. One thing, like, a lot of the problem is, you know, you have people that don't have collars, so you don't know who the dog is. We're hoping, you know, eventually, the dogs just got free running, it doesn't have their dog in a collar. You know, if it goes down to the pound, you know, nobody knows who the collar, so eventually that dog, you know.
Right, it probably ain't coming back.
Right, so hopefully, you know, by the rate of attrition, you know, which I understand, you know, that's, you wanna hear it, you want it fast as you can, I'm just saying, you know, eventually, we're hoping that, you know, it takes care of itself.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that, I really do. This is more that's happened since, me and my wife's been here since 2004. More's been done, I would say, in the last month, even though we didn't see it and everything, but can I ask one other question?
Go ahead.
What about the three monkeys? Are they domesticated, or do y'all know?
I don't even know where they're at.
They don't bother us, they don't bother us, it's with the same people that have never been charged.
Yeah, I don't even know where they're at, I really don't know about the monkeys.
I would say one thing too.
She got a van that's wrapped up, it says Monkey Momma, we've got pictures of it.
We're doing everything we can to keep our citizens safe, and also, we gotta apply what the state allows us to do too. So, we're working hard to make sure we can do, whatever we can do to help our citizens. We're not just sitting back and not hearing you, because we hear you, we hear you loud and clear, so we're trying to do what we can to help. Police Department's doing a fine job in getting out there and answering the calls, and trying to do what they can to help as well, so.
If you'll look at the ordinance before, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, we didn't wait till High Street, Hayman came, we got together, and we started working on that amendment with the attorney. So, things didn't happen overnight with a dog problem. We're not gonna be able to clear it up overnight.
Right.
But we're heading in the right direction. What's happened in the past, we can't do a whole lot about it. In the future, what we're working on.
I understand that.
Us harring somebody is a big step, because that's something the city of Rainsville has never done. So, we're making strides with that, but they've gotta be training. Animal control, if you watch TV at all, you're seeing on TV where they're not feeding animals, you get arrested. So, we gotta make sure we're following the law ourselves.
That's true.
So, you know, that's the reason this guy's gotta be trained, we can't just throw one of our officers or someone we harve out there without proper training, because then it falls back on us.
True.
We wanna make sure we're making all the right moves.
But back to my original question, what about the monkeys?
I didn't know it had it. That's the first I've heard.
They don't bother us, it's not that, but I'm just saying, you know, if we're gonna, you know, you can't let one slide and let the other one not slide.
Do they keep them in their house?
They've got cages outside, and I have seen them running loose, but I mean, they've never left their property. I'm just saying, I didn't want somebody later to go, "Richard, you know, you talk about the dogs, well, how about the monkey, you know, you kinda tied it."
Listen, it's a vicious animal.
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not animal or anything, just a dog.
Yeah, so it could cover the.
But he's not a domestic animal. And unless I misread the ordinance, it says only domestic animals might be kept inside the city bounds.
May I ask you a question, Miss Niki?
I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
When you was gonna get quizzed on dogs, now you surprised me.
Yeah, you felt it. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, I think Dog had something he wanted to do, if we've got time. We got just about five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah, or less.
It'll take me with a minute.
Alright.
The Rainsville Housing Authority, we own and operate ninety-eight units in Rainsville, seventy-eight in Rainsville and twenty in Hendrick. And if we run a good show, and David Sherry does, who owns the housing authority, manage them, keep them all occupied, we'll always make a profit. And for the last several years, I've been able to present to the council a check for, this year is eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars profit, and I presented one to the Hendrick Council last week for around nine thousand dollars. So, here you are, Mayor.
Thank you, Doc, thank you, Doc.
Make sure that the mayor spends.
Could you go back and give us one more?
We'd like to make a profit.
Yes, sir. We'll take the profit, Doc.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Go to the.
May I ask you, what, I asked you a question, and I didn't get a response. What about those of us who have suffered severe injuries due to a dog after this ordinance has been in place but wasn't enforced? What about, what will be done for restitution for us who have suffered injuries?
You may just need to consult with an attorney about what your recourse would be for claiming damages from the owner of the dog.
There's one over here on the end.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the department heads and let them speak now, Sammy?
On a better news note, we have, what is it, our second Saturday in the park celebration, I have a big car showing some vendors and stuff, is this Saturday in City Park. We have some other events going on around Rainsville.
We're also teaming with RTI Saturday, and after the cruise of the park, we're having movie in the park. RTI's movie in the park will be Saturday night also.
Yeah, our pool is coming close to completion. It's been, it's open and running well, and it looks great, had a lot of compliments on it.
Splash pad going good?
Splash pad's going well, so.
Good.
Everything's going pretty good right now with the park department.
Tournaments at the park?
Every weekend, there until midnight or.
See you about August.
Yeah, I'll see you, I'll see you about August or so.
Oh, Tim?
Really don't have anything double center wise, but chamber wise, remember ribbon cutting tomorrow afternoon at three at the Bliss Police Ring Massage between Carper Center and View Shop, where the old tire center in the building.
Freedom Fest comes up a few weeks.
Yep, nineteen days away.
That Freedom Fest run next weekend, and, I mean, not this kind of weekend, but seven days.
Seventeen.
And then the Freedom Fest. Um, gee.
I'll clean.
I'll wait.
Three minutes, I'll try to squeeze that in.
We still got Willie to go to.
Hi, 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 I got you.
Things are going well, if y'all want me to set us what, like, break out tonight, or?
Wait three minutes, go away, public hearing, five hours, we're gonna shut you off right now.
Things are going well, the reserve officers are doing well, training's moving along with them. We are set up for everything that we need so far with them. They're gonna be actually working part of the Freedom Fest and the Freedom Run. They're also been already working the car shows with you guys, the second Saturday in the park, they're doing well with that. Everything's going pretty well so far.
Thanks, Gee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Luke?
The only thing we have is tire department, some of our volunteers will be working alongside with some of the reserve officers during the Freedom Run and the Freedom Festival, helping with traffic, different things like that. We'll have a couple of different places set up during the Freedom Run for medical spots in case someone has trouble or something. Everything's running smooth.
Alright, thank you.
The other thing, now, the other thing I didn't bring up, we have a farmer's market started last Thursday, and it's every Thursday, four to, yeah, four to close, Rainsville City Park. It's hard to put a closing time on it right now, because people's gardens is just now starting to come in, so if everybody settles out quick, it doesn't last as long, if it's not, it's.
We'll have about a minute, about two-minute break. We got a public hearing at five o'clock, so we'll have to start there.